It's 5:30. I want to call this meeting to order. I have a call for regulation, regular meeting agenda item number two, invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Garza, please.
Join me for an invocation, first of all. Thank you for being here with us today and welcome to our city council meeting. Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, may you bless each person who is gathered here today and let your hand of protection be upon them throughout the rest of the week, Lord. Let the work done here tonight come to achievement and let it all be for your own glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Before we start with the pledge of allegiance, I would like to have the Mission High School Student Council who are here with us today visiting join us here in front of the podium to lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
And the sponsor and the principal also join us, please. As your students represent you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Well, can we ask them to come and take a picture with us because I know this is a, I do want to make an announcement that we are going to extend more our youth involvement as part of the campaign to get more youth involved, especially like the student, the student council that does government work within the schools for our children. And I want to thank Mission High School to be the first ones to be able to come out here and do that. So I would like for you all to take a picture with the mayor and the council for the record and for...
Do you want to introduce him first, Mayor?
Oh, yeah. Just introduce him.
Yes, Mayor. We do have our principal from Mission High School, Mr. Roberto Flores.
Thank you.
And also with him, his staff member and sponsor of the Mission High School Student Council advisory, who is Janie Flores. So we appreciate you all being here today.
We want to take the opportunity to thank Mayor Dr. O'Konya along with the council, city council, along with our city manager, Mr. Martin Garza, for this unique opportunity for Mission High School and giving us the opportunity to be the first ones to come and participate in the city government along with our student council officers. I'll go ahead and let Ms. Josie Flores so that we can all participate in this unique and momentous occasion, introduce our officers as well. Again, thank you for the opportunity in allowing Mission High School to be the first campus to participate. So thank you again.
And you're...
Do you want to step outside? Step inside, please, superintendent?
Oh, hi, Dr. Perez.
Oh, my gosh, Dr. Perez.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Go ahead.
Good evening. First off, I'd like to introduce our president, Miss Sonia Trevino, our vice president, Iriana Martinez, our secretary, Annalee Flores, and our spirit officer, Emily Barragan. And again, thank you on behalf of Mission High School for having us here this evening.
Record your name.
My name is Josie Flores.
And introduce the superintendent of schools.
And our superintendent of schools is Dr. Perez.
I forgot your first name.
Dr. Carol Perez.
Dr. Perez, give you the mic there.
Thank you, Dr. O'Konya.
We are live on Facebook.
Okay, great. This is a great opportunity for our students to really come and learn from our city officials. So thank you for the opportunity. At Mission C I S D, we want to strive to make our learning as relevant as possible so this is real-life experiences that can never be replaced. And at the same time, we want to thank you for taking the time to allow our students to take part of this meeting.
You all want to come up? We're going to have to actually meet you.
How you doing?
What's it ringing?
Hi.
You want to go by the lights there?
Do you want to stand maybe?
Yes, you can stand it.
Sure, okay.
We'll come to the bathroom. You have about six of those?
One, two, three.
Thank you. Again, thank you for bringing them over.
I don't know what we are.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
regular meeting agenda number four, proclamation of white cane awareness day. Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor, council. Good afternoon. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the white cane which every blind citizen of our city has the right to carry demonstrates and symbolizes the ability to achieve a full and independent life and the capacity to work productively in competitive employment. Whereas the white cane by allowing every blind person to move freely and safely from place to place makes it possible for the blind to fully participate in and contribute to our society and to live the lives they want. Whereas the state of Texas allows, as the state of Texas law also calls upon employers, both public and private, to be aware of and utilize the employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capabilities. Whereas the state of Texas through its public agencies and with the cooperative assistance of the National Federation of the Blind, Rio Grande Valley Chapter, can and should facilitate the expansion of employment opportunities for greater acceptance of blind persons in the competitive labor market. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Mission, Texas, do hereby proclaim white cane awareness day in the city of Mission and invite members to put on a blindfold and walk with a cane to help demonstrate that with the proper tools and training, a person who is blind can have a successful life and future on October 27th of 2018 from 12 to 3 p.m. at the Mission Parks and Recreation Center, proclaimed on this the 22nd day of October 2018.
I move for approval.
We have motion and a second discussion on the proclamation in this opening. For voting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. A motion carries.
Mayor, if you all could please come up. Randy, 20. Okay. Bye, Randy. Bye, man. Anybody else from the NFP? We always have the same problem, transportation. We all say yes, we'll go, but then it's hard. But we want to thank you. I want to thank the mayor. Thank you so much for your support and thank you to the city. We as the NFP have been growing in the valley since 2010, but this event that is coming up on the 27th is bigger and better because of the support that you have provided. And again, the invitation is to everybody to come and join us and walk. And this is not to scare you. This is just to show the community that with the proper training, the time to explore and discover, blind people can be exactly as anybody else. That blindness is just a characteristic, but it's not what defines us. And I have, as an example, I have my friend Randy here. Randy, you want to say some words?
Like about what?
Like about, talk about a little bit about what you do. What do you do?
Like, I do things. I like play video games, but it doesn't matter what, like if you're blind or if you can see, because if you're blind, you like, you like hear better and so you'll hear the video game better. So since you are, so since I play video games, I can hear like what, what the, like what the CPU is doing and so, and so I can like...
And then you play tennis too, right, Randy?
Yes, I play tennis with this like ball. It's like this sponge and then it's like, they put like a ping pong ball and then they put like...
Bells?
Valines, are you called?
Like little bells that make noise?
Yeah.
So he's just an example of, you know, there's no limitations and we're here, you know, just not for Randy, but we have other students and a lot of members who are just striving for excellence in education, in employment, and just having a social and recreational life like anybody else. So I hope you all join us and learn more about blindness. We're going to have over 35, over, more than 35 resources available. So thank you so much and thank you, Mayor, again, and thank you for the proclamation. Thank you so much.
I also want to compliment you on Inside the Valley interview that you had this Sunday. You know, I was watching it and I just want to give you kudos on that. You know, you did an excellent job.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. And then, and again, you know, this is just growing, getting better and unfortunate because of where we live, because of diabetes. There's so many people who are becoming blind, so we want to reach out to the community so that they know that they're not alone and that this is not the end. This is just a new beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. You all just wait there and we'll let them go down so we can take the picture. We'll take the picture down there.
Okay. Which way do we? Paraca?
Right next to it.
That's right, Randy.
Who's going to receive the proclamation?
Randy.
Randy, right here, Randy.
He's the man.
Here's your, right there. You feel it?
Yes.
Okay. You feel it right there? Okay. We're going to put it wide open to you so for the cameraman and you just want to hold it right there.
It's what the lady said about white cane day. He needs an umbrella.
Yes.
Thank you. Randy, you're also missionero.
Yes. This is to you. And we will, we'll ask the city manager to make one umbrella.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody?
Thank you.
Regular meeting agenda item number five, proclamation for the municipal court week.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. I come before you. The municipal court week proclamation reads as follows: Whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting equality of life in Texas, whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. Whereas state law authorizes a municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the Mission Municipal Court is a state court and its judges are members of the state judiciary. Whereas the procedures for the Mission Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state of Texas. Whereas the city of Mission is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. Whereas municipal judges are not policymakers for the city of Mission but are bound by the laws and canons of judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the city council, city officials, and employees. Whereas the city council recognizes that the constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Mission Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Mission, Texas, that the week of November 5th through November 9th, 2018 is hereby recognized as Municipal Court Week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the Municipal Court of Mission, proclaimed on this the 22nd day of October 2018.
Thank you, Judge. Do I hear a motion to approve the proclamations? We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. This is open for further discussion. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A proclamation passes.
Thank you very much. I would like to just add that in celebration of Municipal Court Week, the Mission Municipal Court will be holding an amnesty from November 5th through November 17th for anyone with outstanding tickets or warrants. They can come in, pay off their tickets in full, and have their warrant fees and any failure to appear charges removed and waived. And I also do have three members of the court here today. Janie Gomez.
If you all can step up front, please.
Nora Gonzalez. And Margie Renteria.
Step up so we can all take a picture together. Any of the other judges here?
No.
Judge in the middle?
Okay.
And I will give you a little chance here and then we can open it right here, touch. Like that.
Okay.
There's more.
Ready?
Ready? Congratulations, Judge.
Thank you.
And step.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're okay. You said... At this time, I want to divert from the regular agenda items and I want to call agenda item under 3.0 approval and active, an approval 3.0. I would like to call item 3.4. Mr. Mead, if you could come up here, please, and send this spirit of time constraint.
Mayor, thank you. Council, thank you for moving our item up. Item 3.4, I'm going to let, are we doing 3.3 or 3.4, Mayor?
I...
I think 3.3?
3.3, I agree.
3.3.
Let me call 3.3 for the record. 3.3, approval of a resolution number?
1576.
1576. Go ahead, Mr. Mead.
This resolution, I'm going to let Lee McCormick make the presentation on this. He's our financial advisor on this project. I'll let him explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lee McCormick with Community Development Associates, the financial advisor to the Mission Economic Development Corporation. The agenda item in front of you today is a resolution approving the Mission Economic Development Corporation issuing up to 360 million of tax-exempt bonds for nat gas. It's a project in Beaumont for methanol production. The M E D C had issued 253 million of bonds for this project back in 2016 when it was a greenfield new construction. It is now complete. The project is up and running and because of that, the company has the ability to refinance these bonds at a lower interest rate with better debt service coverages. So it's a good thing the project is working out as expected and they want to refinance and get a lower interest rate. And they also have about 97 million of additional costs that qualify, so they're increasing the size from 253 million to 360 million. So all good news. There is no risk, no liability to the M E D C or the city of Mission with regards to approving this project. It is a conduit financing. The fees that are expected to be received by the M E D C are approximately 390,000 at closing and 437,000 over roughly 10 years with the annual fees for 827,000 total by acting as the conduit issuer. The only thing I would add is, you may recall, Mayor, that part of this process is after I'm done speaking, we do have to open it up to the public for public comments before city council takes action. But with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Not a problem. Before we take action as a result of the requirement, I have to consider it as a public hearing. This is a public hearing for the resolution...
15... 76.
1576, am I correct?
Yes.
Public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to favor or against talk about this resolution? Again, anybody from the public, from the audience, this is a public hearing. You're free to speak in favor or against this resolution. Again, this is a public hearing for the resolution. You can, anybody that would want to come and speak in favor or against. There being no input from the public, I will open it for a motion. I will entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second in this opening for further discussion for the council to be able to discuss any specifics on the resolution. No discussion in this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item 3.4.
Mayor, as mentioned, Lee McCormick will be making that presentation as well.
Yes. Hello. This is, this is actually the third financing that the M E D C has done for waste management over the years. This is a transaction that includes seven of their facilities around the state. We have gone and had public hearings at all of those facilities except for Guadalupe County, which is scheduled for next week. So far, they've all approved the transaction and passed resolutions authorizing the M E D C to issue bonds in their jurisdiction. As before, there is no risk, no liability to the M E D C or the city by approving this financing. The bond proceeds are going to be used to finance landfill cell development at their existing facilities, just as the prior bonds are. So they're just continuing to develop these facilities underneath their currently permitted acreage. So there's nothing new with regards to the project itself. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And as before, there's a public hearing requirement.
At this time, before I ask the input from the council, I would like to open it as a public hearing. This is a public hearing for resolution 1577. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
1577. In favor or against, please come up to the podium and provide input or feedback on...
Good afternoon. Maria Esther Bena. I really don't know much about this, just that he said that there was no liability and to continue these facilities and no risk to the city. Now, when you're talking about waste management, does that also mean that all of this continued development is going to stop sometimes access smell? And are they treating that with chemicals or how are they addressing that waste?
It is my understanding that this waste management is not in this area. Am I correct? It is in a different part of the state of Texas. But it is required that they come before us and open the public. It is not going to, none of the smell or whatever the operation affects the valley and especially the city of Mission.
Then if it's no risk and no liability to the city, I am for it.
Thank you, Ms. Bena. This is a public hearing. Anybody else would like to address from the audience? This is a public hearing. Anybody would like to address on the approval or disapproval of resolution 1574? You can be in favor or against. This is a public hearing for approval or disapproval of resolution 1577. There being no more further input from the audience, I will close the public hearing and I will open it to, entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
And a second to approve resolution 1577. Again, I open it for further discussion by any of the council persons. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.5.
Mayor, thank you. This project here, as you all know, the Mission M E D C has been leasing the seed building for the last two years. We do have a 20-year lease. However, we have the option to buy the building after two years. So before you is a resolution that would allow me to execute the bank documents to be able to purchase that building. And we did go out and reach out to several banks. The bank that submitted the best option, and Mr. Plata was part of the loan committee, they selected a B V A bank for a loan in the amount of 7,919,131 dollars. That is at a rate of 4.82 percent interest rate, fixed for 20 years. The other banks that we talked, and also there's no lien on the building. The other banks that we talked to were charging interest rates above 5 to 6 percent with a balloon at five years and a balloon at 10 years.
Plus a lien.
Plus a lien on the building, right? So we felt that this was the best option and so did the loan committee.
So staff recommendation is?
Staff recommendation is to move forward with a loan with B V A bank.
This is not a public hearing.
Correct. It's not a public hearing.
And this is entertaining a motion?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
We have a question before the motion.
If there's no lien on the building, what is...
We're pledging our sales tax.
Okay. So that's what the collateral is?
That's what they're, yeah. The other banks were taking both a pledge on the sales tax and a lien on the building.
Okay. All right, just...
And the interest rates are a lot better.
Yeah, the fixed interest rate is kind of what did it, you know. The interest rate's so low.
Okay. Good job.
Thank you.
Since you were leasing before and now you're looking to buy, are there any additional costs that you expect?
So that includes closing everything? It also meets the debt reserve requirement that we're supposed to have. So the cost of the building, 7 million. The additional amount is to cover the debt service that we're required to have for the term of the law.
Any other questions from the council? No other questions, I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further final discussions among the council?
Resolution number?
Resolution number 1576. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. 78. I subtracted instead of read it. 1578. Correct. Stand corrected for the record.
Thank you.
Resolution 1578. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Resolution 1578 is approved. Thank you for going back to... I'm going back to the regular meeting agenda item for the purpose of those who are following the agenda item and I'm going back to regular, I'm calling for regular agenda item number six and it's a report from the National Butterfly Center. Marina Wright, Mr. Garza, you'll be the lead also on it.
Hello. Thank you, city council and mayor. I want to thank you for everything. It's a pleasure to work with the city of Mission for all of our events and activities, from the support we receive from the police department and Parks and Rec and media relations and the city manager's office. It's really wonderful to be located here and to be able to shine a very positive light on our quality of life and all of the amenities available to the residents and citizens of South Texas. I wanted to report on the Texas Butterfly Festival. It's coming up November 3rd through the 6th. The rat cards are here in the building and at the Chamber of Commerce, the library, and the museum, I believe, everywhere. Everyone is invited to attend Saturday, our Free Community Day. That starts with the Monarch 5K Fun Run. That is not a free event, but the rest of the day from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. is and we have all kinds of activities and the weather is...
Thank you for, for going back to. I'm going back to the regular meeting agenda item for the, for the purpose of those who are following the agenda item. And I'm going back to, to a regular, I'm calling for a regular agenda item, number six, and it's a report from the National Butterfly Center. Marina Wright, Mr. Garza, you'll be the lead also on it.
Hello. Thank you, City Council and Mayor. I want to thank you for everything. It's a pleasure to work with the City of Mission for all of our events and activities, from the support we receive from the Police Department and Parks and Rec and Media Relations and the City Manager's Office. It's really wonderful to be located here and to be able to shine a very positive light on our quality of life and all of the amenities available to the residents and citizens of South Texas. I wanted to report on the Texas Butterfly Festival. It's coming up November 3rd through the 6th. The RAC cards are here in the building and at the Chamber of Commerce, the library and the museum, I believe, everywhere. Everyone is invited to attend Saturday, our Free Community Day. That starts with the Monarch 5K Fun Run. That is not a free event, but the rest of the day from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM is, and we have all kinds of activities and the weather is supposed to be beautiful. And maybe it's a good thing, but the butterflies are a little late this year, thanks to the weather we're having. So, the festival should be full of them. Of course, we also have the banquet on Monday night. All of you are invited to attend that. It may be a little dry for the community. Our speaker is a PhD from Boston College, who has discovered the oldest remains of fossilized lepidoptera, that's butterflies and moths, on the planet. And it's exciting because it tells us that butterflies and moths were here before the Jurassic Age and that mass extinction event. And they may well survive the next mass extinction event. So, that's, that'll be the, the highlight of the festival this year. Saturday, November 10th, we have another special event. That is the Cariso Comerudo Tribe of Texas, which is native to the Rio Grande Valley, does not have a home in South Texas. Their lands have been taken for various projects and most of their members have left the area. The National Butterfly Center will likely become their new representative home here in South Texas. And they will be having a ritual remembrance of their ancestors on November the 10th, including a bear dance and sweat lodge, which the public is invited to observe. So, that will be the afternoon of November the 10th. The next thing I want to discuss is a little less pleasant. The border wall is coming and Customs and Border Protection has been less than transparent with information. There is a public comment period that is open until November 6th. We do not know whether the city has made any public comment with regard to the impact that the border wall will have on our community, specifically our sales tax, which we just have pledged to the purchase of this building, our hotel occupancy tax, our alcoholic beverage tax, and the quality of life that we enjoy as the result of an abundant and productive, a powerful ecotourism economy. That will be decimated by the construction of the border wall, which we know will close Benson State Park, and it will put La Lomita Mission behind the border wall, as well as Riverside Club and the majority of the National Butterfly Center. On October 30th, Border Patrol is having a webinar they have invited us to watch where they publicize their border wall construction plans. We have already been informed that the bulldozer should arrive in February. So, I want to invite all of you at 2:00 PM or at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, October 30th, to the watch party, not much of a party, for this webinar that will be broadcast by Customs and Border Protection. Because as you are well aware, you will have to deliver municipal services to homes and communities that will be trapped behind the border wall. So, you all need to know what is happening to our lands. Beyond that, we have been informed that there will be a meeting with Congressman Cuellar or other representatives from the Department of Homeland Security in the next two weeks. He met with landowners, Congressman Cuellar met with landowners in Starr County today and is trying to schedule his return. So, please join us for that event. I also would humbly request, since Customs and Border Protection is hosting no community meetings, no public education events, so that our citizens and residents are aware of what is happening and have an opportunity to object or mobilize to preserve and protect our community, that the City of Mission take it upon itself to host these workshops and public education events for the benefit of our citizens and our taxpayers, so that we can map the future with the border wall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Thank you.
Call in regular meeting agenda item number seven, report from the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. It doesn't look like Mr. Albert Chappa, but, but you're the current president, am I correct?
Yes. Current Chairman of the Board for the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce, come to report and give you an update on status of our search for a new President/CEO. And I'm pleased to announce that we found our candidate. She will be starting November 1st. Her name is Brenda Enriquez. She comes from UTRGV. And also, at the same time, we've put together a plan for succession. So, we have a number one and a number two. And Mr. Albert Chappa will be reporting on that on the next meeting. Main thing here is, just want to assure the city that we, we wanted to make sure that we had good continuity. And that's the reason why I'm here at this moment. I'm the outgoing chairman and I stayed on board just to make sure that, you know, we had a good handoff between Robert Rosell to Brenda and then also from Albert, from myself to Albert Chappa. So, Albert Chappa will be the new Chairman of the Board, starting this month.
Wow. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody has any questions from the council in London for the chamber? No question? No question? Okay. Regular meeting agenda item number eight, presentation by, of American Disability Act Checklist for City Facilities, Mr. Brent Benson.
Good evening, Councilman, Mayor. We've been working on the ADA checklist for our existing facilities. Anyway, it's the priorities for accessibility. In moving forward, we're to make sure that all city facilities are ADA compliant. We are following established guidelines for our priorities accessibility. There are four priorities that we are currently making inspections on and our compliance on all city facilities. Of the 28 city facilities that are currently under our maintenance program, we are near complete with 15, 15 of our facilities. Yes, there are minor issues that we have to, that need to be addressed and these facilities can be met without major expense. These, upon completion of our report, will be addressed in respect to priority and public use. Okay? Just for your understanding, the priorities are number one, is accessible approach and entrance consists of 49 compliance issues. That's just basically your entrance into the parking lot, into the building itself. Priority number two, there are 88 compliance issues that we're looking at there. That's the access of goods and services to allow people with disabilities to obtain goods and services, to participate in activities without assistance. This includes handicap ramps, ramps with railings, wall protrusions, elevator requirements, signs, interior doors and whatnot. The priorities number three is toilet room consists of 50 compliance issues that we are dealing with. And that deals with signage, the doors, the restroom stall size, lavatories, mirrors and coat hooks. Priority number four is amenities of drinking fountains such as public, drinking fountains and public telephones should be accessible to people with disabilities. And there's 20 compliance issues there that we're dealing with. In total, there was 207 compliance issues. Now, had I brought my notebook in here, it'd be a stack of that much for our 28 facilities that we're looking at. But we're working aggressively to it and our aim is to make sure that all of these compliance issues are addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Any questions from the council?
Is there a timetable, Brett, as to when you think you might get these?
We're working on it aggressively. We, with the staff that we do have, I would think within another month period, we should have everything complete. At that time, I'll bring it back and let you know, just see how much we're looking at cost-wise. Some of our minor issues, just like placement of signs, some of our parking lots might have to be resealed so it can restripe. There's, you know, and they're, they deal with us, they're reasonable. They, they don't expect any major financial issues to be, be dealt with. If it's a major issue, we'll, we'll get to talk to them about it.
What date did you start looking at using the checklist?
Pardon me?
What date did you start using the checklist on these facilities?
About two months ago.
Two months ago?
Yes, sir. But we had lots of other issues that we're dealing with, but we're aggressively working on it now.
So, out of the two months, you make 15 out of 28 so far?
Yes. But we really didn't start really, we, we started understanding the issues here and it's, it's a pretty detailed report and acceptance and having a thorough understanding. We had lots of questions asked, but to really get in and start looking at it, we've been working on it for the past 30 days.
I do want to make sure that when we get new facilities, new parks, that the architects will deal, deal with that, that they have a copy of the checklist also.
Yes, sir.
So, we can get it from the onset and don't have to worry about reacting after the cost, after we built the building.
Okay. And, you know, it's just so you understand that while some people may think that I'm a new construction and alterations are dealt with, but anyway, a lot of people look at our facilities as being grandfathered in, and that is not true whatsoever. Even if it weren't true, it's our aim to make sure all of our facilities are compliant. ADA is a civil rights act and it's not a building code that we're dealing with here. So, we'll do our best. If we have questions, we'll come forward. But anyway, we'll have a report ready and the financial costs that we're looking at.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions by the council? Mr. Benson, thank you very much for your report. Very informative.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you, Brent. Regular meeting agenda item number nine, departmental reports. You have them in writing in, in your packets. Any questions, the department heads are here. So, if you want to call any of them directly and ask them the questions, this is the time.
I'll move to approve a submitted.
We have a motion to approve the departmental reports that is submitted in writing. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And this is opening for any further discussions. No further discussions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Regular agenda item number 10, citizens' participation. Please, this is open to anybody that's in the audience that wants to address the, the council on an issue not being in the agenda. An issue not being in the agenda, come forth and, and state your name and address and, and state your issue, please. I do want to add a little bit that, I want to add to citizen participation, and I haven't told legal on this, but any direct, direct statement to the council, I will not entertain, entertain as part of the citizens' participation. We will take issues, general issues, as, as just, just for the sake of the record. This, wait a minute.
Again, good afternoon, council members and City of Mission and public. First of all, I want to thank you all. Thank you, thank you, thank you for opening the Obleit Street. I felt like we were hostage for 20 years. Never drive by there. And thank you for opening that. Oh, my God, that's so nice. And the two item is the Miller Street. Again, now it's being worked on and that is causing us a lot of injury to our vehicles because the railroad needs to take better care of the train. We know how heavy the trains are and it does cause a lot of damage and it's to the benefit of the city that we have railroad crossings that are up to par. And then, on behalf of the Sunset Lions Club, one of our main goals is recycling and we want to thank you, thank you for having the recycling bin at the Lions Park. Now, we are working with our schools, trying to teach our kids how to recycle clean and clean paper and clean plastic that is no longer in use. For example, the Junior High is going to be saving the tops of the water and soda containers. The Lions Club, we serve our community, our country and then international. Some of the international victims with cancer need our phones and tops for win chemotherapy. So, we are now going into our schools, going into the clubs and the kids are getting involved. Instead of throwing trash, it's going to be a joy when somebody's life can be helped. And then, under items that Mr. Benson just talked about, so if we have an issue with ADA, we are to contact Mr. Benson because I still have a concern, especially in the Mission historical Obleit area, we need sidewalks. We need sidewalks, really in other areas. And I'll tell you a little bit, you know, because if you have a motorized wheelchair, you have to go and make a turn, turnaround for our population, especially to be able to get out more. So, I would like more sidewalks in the historical and downtown area. And that's it. I want to thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So much.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to address the council under citizens' participation? Just come before the podium on any issue not on the agenda. Any other citizens' participation, anybody from the audience would like to address the council? Not on the agenda. Anybody from the audience, any citizen would like to address the council that is not in the agenda? Okay, I'll, there being no others. I'm going to move and I'm going to go again, just to let, let everybody know that I am going to go out of order. I am going, I am going to call agenda item 3.19 and I will ask for Ms. Carrillo to give me the ordinance number for it.
Forty-seven oh-nine.
Forty-seven oh-nine. Mr. Garza, I open agenda item 3.19.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, good afternoon. This is an approval of an ordinance, forty-seven oh-nine, authorizing issuance, sale and delivery of city of Mission Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2018 payable from the levy of a direct and continuing annual epilorm tax within limits prescribed by law and a limited pledge of the next net revenues from cities, waterworks and sewer system prescribing the terms from therefore providing for the payments of the principal thereof and interest thereon, authorizing the execution of a purchase contract to be used in connection with the sale of these certificates and making other provisions regarding such certificates and matters incident here too. And before I continue, Mayor, we do have Dusty Trailer from RBC Capital Markets, who is our financial advisor for the City of Mission and also representative from the Ramírez and Guerrero LP Bond Council to the City of Mission, Mr. Chu Ramírez, are here present in case there's any questions. But this agenda item is the action that is being required is in the item is to approve an ordinance to complete.
Excuse me, Mr. Garza.
I'm sorry.
Can both of you step up, step to the podium, please, so, so we can get you on, on Facebook and our citizens can see you, you know, and be able to, you know, to know that you're working on behalf, on our behalf. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And we'll give them an opportunity to speak right now on behalf of their firms, but the action required in this item is the approval of an ordinance to complete the process for the tax note financing in the principal amount of $12,500,000 for the purchase of commercial sanitation vehicles and commercial garbage bins, construction, repair, rehabilitation and renovation of municipal buildings to include professional services for the purpose of planning and designing improvements and payment of the cost of issuance of the certificates of obligation. Again, once again, we do have Mr. Trailer here and Mr. Ramírez in case there's any questions.
Do we have any, any questions by the council?
Do we have a breakdown on how with these funds are going to be?
Absolutely, sir. So, we've had a couple of workshops regarding a possible bond issuance and that's what we're here for today. And the breakdown for the total, the 12.5 million is in, I'm sorry, engineering for the Madero International Bridge is 5 million. We have commercial sanitation and commercial containers and equipment for 2.9 million. We have the library roof renovation project, which is an estimate of 1.8 million. The museum roof renovation project was, is an estimate of $550,000. And other facility improvement projects, which is a total of $2,250,000, totaling 12.5 million. And so, this is the items that we discussed during those workshops that were also, the public was also invited to.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
I would like to have Dusty give a quick report, especially on the interest rate that we just received this morning. I think it's a good interest rate and, and the financing part and, and the amount of years that we're amortizing this, this loan for.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Martine. Mayor, members of the City Council, again for the record, my name is Dusty Trailer. I'm a managing director with RBC Capital Markets. We are honored to serve as the city's financial advisor. The, first of all, I want to give, I want to give a lot of just kudos to the city and to your staff particularly and, and how to your staff particularly, and how well and how hard they worked to bring this transaction before you today, since we gave notice of intent back in July. Took a lot of effort on their part. There were a lot of steps that required their time. They were very diligent to this matter and helped to make it a success today. And with that, we were able to go out into the market today and obtain an interest rate of three point seven two percent. That is a fixed rate of interest over the fifteen-year life of these certificates of obligation. They will pay off in 2033, and we think that's also a prudent step that the city took. A lot of times, cities will amortize these out a little bit longer. City of Mission has taken the step to reduce that in order to reduce the interest cost to the citizens of Mission over the, over the life of the CEO. So that, those are all of my pertinent comments, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions, Brent?
What is our bond rating?
The bond rating on this, we carried an A from S and P and an A three from Moody's. We also purchased municipal bond insurance from Assured Guaranty that allowed us to sell as though we had a double A rating in the marketplace.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ramírez?
Yes, Mayor, good evening. We've prepared the documents for you, so once you approve the transaction, the City Secretary, I'm sure, has some documents for you. The only document we'd like to take back with us tonight, or maybe first thing in the morning, would be the purchase contract. We've got to, we've got to, we've got to sign that tonight, perhaps, and we'll get it first thing in the morning from her. But do you have any questions on the, on the legal documents?
If you have any questions, don't let me leave without signing it.
I've got him right?
Okay. Yes.
And these are, these are tax exempt bonds, by the way.
Yes. Do you want to introduce our third guest?
Yes, Mayor, I apologize, but I didn't see Mr. Perez in the audience, but we have from Seibert, Cisneros and Schenk Company LLC, Mr. Ronaldo Perez, who's a vice president. He'll be underwriting this, this bond.
You want to say something, Mr. Perez?
Sure thing. Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, City. It's a great opportunity for not only Seibert, Cisneros and Schenk, the firm, but most especially me, as you know, and from City of Mission, proud son of Mission. And as Mr. Trailer mentioned, we did go out in the market this morning. That was what our firm handled, and it went really well as far as the pricing. And the amortization, as Mr. Trailer mentioned, a short amortization allowed that lower interest rate. And we met with success in the market and were able to underwrite the bonds, sell the bonds and underwrite what was needed. No changes in prices from what's called the order period to repricing, if you will. There was no actual repricing. So all in all, a very successful transaction, in our opinion. Thank you so much for the opportunity, again.
Thank you.
I guess at this time, I was, I will entertain the motion.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and approve, to approve ordinance forty-seven oh nine. Any final discussions by any council persons? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will go back to the regular one point oh public hearing. One point one, to be exact, letter A, conditional use permit. Mr. Acevedo, you, this is a public hearing.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Item one point one A is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages for Spoggy's Ice House. This is at eight fifteen North Francisco Avenue, being the south hundred and nine and a half feet of Lot Two, Block one thirty-seven, Mission original townsite, and all of Lot Fifty-two, Johnny Cherry Industrial Subdivision. Property Zone C Three, general commercial, and the applicant is Spoggy's Ice House in care of Sonia Mayhaw. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October tenth, two thousand eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is at the northwest corner of Francisco and Eighth Street. This is a longstanding business, which is frequented by both Mission residents and winter Texans. This CUP was most recently approved on January eleventh, two thousand seventeen, for a period of two years. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday from ten a.m. to twelve a.m., and Saturday from ten a.m. to one a.m. Sundays are open from twelve p.m. to twelve a.m. A total of five employees, including the owner and the operation. And this request is compliance with Section six dash four, which requires that no alcoholic beverages be sold within three hundred feet of a church, a public school, a private school, or a hospital. However, they will need a waiver of the three hundred foot separation to residential. It is noted that this operation has been in existence for over fifty-eight years. The establishment has not ceased to operate. The owner recently passed away, and the wife is merely transferring all permits into her name. There was one resident, or one family that showed up in opposition, and they were not opposed to the business, but they were mostly opposed to the noise that is generated on certain nights when there's live music. And, but they were not in opposition to the actual sale and onsite consumption of alcohol. They were just merely addressing the noise issue. I did explain to them the sign, I mean, the noise ordinance, and they were made aware that PD can handle any noise issues or noise complaints that arise from this location. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years, at which they will need to renew their conditional use permit and TABC license. We're also asking that they redo their business license in the name of the new owner, and we're also asking a waiver of the three hundred foot separation requirement from the residential areas. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item one point one A is now before you.
Thank you. I am opening the public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against adoption of ordinance forty-seven ten? Please come to the podium and provide your name and address and advices whether you're for or against and, and your. Mr. Acevedo.
Si, mi nombre es Armentina Adam de Oviedo. Este, mi dirección es cuatro veinte Is, calle ocho, mi ciudad Texas. Si, pues nada más veníamos, ¿verdad?, por esto. Ya habíamos venido la otra vez, pero, ¿verdad?, nos citaron otra vez. Y vinimos, pues nada más para decir, ¿verdad?, pues que tengan consideración, ¿verdad? Este, que estén baja la música, ¿verdad? Porque nosotros, pues vivimos ahí enfrente, y, pues a veces hay mucho ruido. Estas dos semanas ha estado muy bien. Esas dos semanas no ha habido nada, ¿verdad? Y pues se siente algo más diferente, ¿verdad? Pero, ¿verdad?, estamos, este, nada más pidiendo eso, ¿verdad?, que tengan consideración, ¿verdad? Porque somos personas grandes, ¿verdad? Y pues a veces ya muy noche, o esto, ¿verdad? Es algo difícil, pero, van a ver qué se puede hacer.
Okay. Gracias.
Starlin Melendez, vivo en siete diecinueve Norte Francisco Avenida. Ah, nada más quiero decir que, no más que no tengan la música muy alta, si se oyen recio, y es todo lo que.
Okay.
I was just coming to.
The same.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Well, she's my mother-in-law, and we always get together, like, on Sundays.
Go ahead, identify yourself.
Like, we're a big family, and we get together on Sundays, and usually the, we live right in front, like, right here. And, like, the music is real loud, and we have to scream at each other to hear each other. So we're up to the point that we don't even get together anymore, because it's, like, sometimes it is, like, really loud. One time, we did call the police, and they told us that they had a permit, like, to have the music louder than normal, and I think, I believe it's until, like, ten, like, the normal time or something. And the police officer did tell us that they had, like, permit to be up until twelve. And, like, my mother-in-law and father-in-law, they're, like, older people, so their bedroom is right in the corner in front of the music, so it's, like, really, really loud. So we're not against, we've never had problems with, with them or nothing, but we just want them to take into consideration that, like, not to have the music, like, real loud. A couple of months, like, a while, they would have it, like, almost every day, almost every day. So we just want them to take into consideration that not to have it, I guess, that loud or every day, or at least give us Sunday, right? That's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? This is a public hearing, in favor or against?
Good afternoon again. Maria Estepña. And first of all, I heard the building was in existence for fifty-eight years, yes, as a nice house. That's where Chapita used to go buy his ice and go down the neighborhood, raspos. So if anybody knows about that neighborhood, it's me, okay? And when I, I was not able to come to that meeting on the tenth, because I was so sick. I am a cancer survivor, and I have a lot of damage to my left side, and I was very sick. That's another reason I wasn't able to go to court. But I did then come in and have a meeting with Mr. Hyman. And first of all, I was saying, this, the notices were sent off, had some problems. It was very general, it even covered my properties. I have seven oh nine Obleit A, seven nine, seven oh nine Obleit B, and I have seven fifteen Miller Avenue. My properties are worth three hundred thousand dollars. And my, my father's parents bought in San memory in nineteen thirty-four and relocated to seven fifteen Miller in nineteen forty-five. Now, as taxpayers and as landowners, I have a lot of rights, a lot of rights. I hear the younger crew telling me, oh, wow, we need music, and we want to go somewhere to party. Yes, my two daughters are in Live Nation, and one, one just was in Apavali for training, and that is my daughter's line of business. They bring a lot of music, entertainment. However, they do not have their entertainment in a residential area. If my father, Bernardo Peña, Arturo Gonzalez, Mr. Silva, or Salamundar Silva, would say absolutely no music on Sunday, nada. Sunday is a church day. My other friend, David Garcia, was not able to be here. He bought that beautiful historical house worth almost four hundred thousand right now, and I will eventually invite you to go see it. He gets upset because he says that he wants to have a party with friends coming from all over the world to the Miller area, and they can't even hear because of the loud noise. Now, but you want that noise in front of your house? I have other neighbors who are supposed to give me letters. They want their kids in bed at eight or nine o'clock on Sunday, not at ten o'clock. I remember trying to talk to Sonia, and I've never met her. I told her daughter I'd come in peace. Well, it got hostile and wild, and the yelling and screaming. Then I went, I said, oof, I'm talking to the wrong person. You're not even the only. And Sonia didn't show, I didn't show, then maybe. So I, so I got better and walked the neighborhood. This family invested about nine thousand dollars in the patio to park the cars, because it's not only the alcohol, it's not only the noise, it's the overflow, flow of vehicles. You can pass by there. The McDoys family, they don't want to come. She's like this, she just stops her husband, and she says, boom, 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 and then you have some bands that have more equipment than others. Oh, my God. Oh, we don't want music on Sunday, nada. I did talk to Sonia, she's a, I give her a lot of credit. She's a woman, she saved Ice House. If not, it would probably be another. It's beautiful inside.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Just a reminder, we do have a three-minute limit for.
We have a three-minute, three-minute limit, Ms. Perez.
So, then I would like, listen to me, then I would like to allow her to have the alcohol permit with conditions. You have to call the city. Every time there's a wake, a hit, yelling, screaming, robbing the music, I will come after her and City. We don't, we, I want the alcohol permit with conditions. Please, all move into our homes. And she said she was going to try to enclose it, so I hope and pray you make a good decision.
Anybody else in favor or against the request?
Good evening. My name is Melissa Cerda. I live at ten eleven Obleit. And I do want to mention that I am, I was born in California. We got here in nineteen seventy-four. I had a friend, I would walk down there, and I remember the Ice House. I don't remember liquor, I don't remember bands or anything. I actually live behind, north of the post office, and we hear the music as well. It's not as loud as, as it is with these neighbors. I, I believe I would like the alcohol with limits, with limitations also. My ex-husband is alcoholic. You know, it's funny, everybody wants to get together, and it's like, just one, just, he cannot have one, and I'm sure that happens all the time. Unfortunately, when they leave the building, you don't know what happens after that. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request as ordinance forty-seven ten?
Hi, everyone.
I'm Gilbert's wife, Sonia. I think I've really changed that around. Both Gilbert and I work towards him being a public servant. I understand, we didn't, at first, we didn't understand completely about all the noise ordinance laws, whatnot. The PD came in, they left a paper, we read the paper of the noise ordinance, and we tried to bring it down. By nine o'clock, the bands are shut off by Sunday. We could even go earlier than that if we need be. But we've been holding a lot of the music on the inside. I try to work with the neighbors as much as possible as far as the parking. I, I don't know what to say about that. I mean, Esther has talked to me about that. I guess it comes down to something to do with the city. But I try to comply as much as possible. I'm very pro-Mission. I've held a lot, a lot of benefits for people in my backyard, and I think you've been to a couple of them. So I don't think that, I mean, we're a beer and wine bar, you know? We try to keep things as contained as possible. You walk in, you know, we're public, we're pro-police, fire department, public servants, and very pro-Mission. So I don't think it's a place of ill repute and whatever be the case. And like I said, I try to really go and be as neighborly as possible. I really don't know what else to say. There's more to say, but I'm just trying to think what to say. I would never want to be anti-City or go against the citizens, but I mean, I try, like I said, to keep it as contained as possible and try to make it a more of a family place, because we are beer and wine, so we do welcome families. It's not that kind of establishment, you know, where we condone. In fact, we give lights home to our, to our patrons. We call them a lift, and we go way out of our way to make sure that everybody's safe and everybody has a good time. So I guess that's all I got to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request on ordinance forty-seven ten? No other information? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ilda Flores. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I don't know Sonia, but I have been to her establishment. I'm not a drinker. I don't go to parties to get drunk or anything. My husband and I had a business here in Mission for over thirteen years. I just hate seeing anyone losing their company, their business, their, their, their right to eat, you know, because there's complaints. I was born and raised here in nineteen sixty, since, you know, my age, but I, I don't understand why we have so much animosity. If, I don't know how Sonia can, can make the music less loud. I don't know, but it's a mission establishment run by mission people. Let's help each other, you know? If, if it was a Starbucks in the neighborhood, I don't think there would be a lot of complaints, but it's just as loud. There's a lot of noise, and there's a lot of traffic with a Starbucks. I mean, look at the one on Ware. It's packed. You would think that they sell beer there, because everybody leaves there in a hurry, or is there in such a hurry to get a cup of coffee. I just would hate to see another mission business not do well. That's all. I don't know how we can help her. I wish I could help the neighbors that are around there. I don't know what to do. I really don't, but I would just hate to see another mission business shut down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing on a conditional use permit of ordinance forty-seven ten. Anybody in favor or against?
Hi.
I'm Ilda Flores, twelve oh one Carroll. I'm not a drinker. As a matter of fact, I used to work with the mothers against drunk driving. I hate drunk drivers. I dislike it. But Sonia's defense, I just met her a few weeks ago. But Sonia's defense, I just met her a few weeks ago. The AMI, AMI class of 1980 had a reunion there and it was the most peaceful event I've attended in years. We kept it indoors, uh, we checked in everyone. It was peaceful and quiet. I love the neighborhood. I lived in San Francisco for 34 years before I moved to the north side. I walked Francisco every day to Junior High School for six years. Um, it's a nice neighborhood. I understand we need to be considerate of noise. There's no games on Conway. Those are for many years, many bars on Conway. I don't know if anyone complained about them, but hopefully there is a resolution. There are several classrooms that are held or held the feelings of them and planned for the next few weeks, so please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on a conditional use permit. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing on a conditional use permit. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing on a conditional use permit. Anybody in favor or against this request? There being nobody approaching the, the podium, I am closing this public hearing and I'm going to open it for the council, for council discussion. What is the wishes of the council?
Um, I'll make, Sonia, so here? Come on back up, Sonia. I guess the only problem here is noise and even then, Sunday noise.
I guess Sundays is the real issue.
Yeah.
And like I said, we've been shutting it down within the city ordinance and we can go, I mean, that's what I've been doing and I haven't had any complaints.
I've known you a long time and, and I think you can be...
I mean, I'm compliant with what...
You can be considerate enough to understand if, if maybe the, the noise is a little bit too loud.
Absolutely. And I've addressed it many a times.
Yeah. Uh, I don't see a problem with them having...
I mean, with Gilbert being a policeman and a firefighter, you, yeah, I mean, I know right where I stand there. And we had gotten a paper from the PD, given us the ordinance and we followed that as well, even on Saturday nights.
Yeah.
It used to be when Jim and Karen owned it and Foot and Amy, the parties would go on until midnight.
I remember. Oh, I'm sorry.
And, and, uh, since we've taken over and we got that paper from the city, we've shut them down no later than 9:30.
So you understand the concerns of the neighbors in terms of Sundays and the noise?
Absolutely.
And that's something that you think you can, you can get a better handle on?
Absolutely. And I've been trying. In fact, I've been holding a lot of my music inside.
Yeah.
And I've also reached out to her, but she never called me back. Esther, about, I'm talking to a contractor about enclosing so that sound gets, we're adding more.
Yeah.
And then we talked about insulation so that we're going to enclose some of the backyard, but she never returned my call.
Well, Esther, you'll call it back, right, Esther?
Sorry, text back.
You text me back, but she never called me back. But anyway, so I was trying to be nice to reach out to her and discuss to her, with her, that I was, uh, on the process of working and talking with a contractor about enclosing.
Well, as long as you're open...
Because my patriots that are contractors are willing to help enclose it.
I mean, as long as you're open to the concerns of, of your neighbors in terms of Sundays...
Absolutely. You know how I am, Gus.
Mr. Martinez, uh, we're opening it for the council's feedback, you know?
Okay, well, I have some questions.
Sorry, sorry.
Yes.
Uh, so, that's really all I have. I mean, if, if, uh, if the owners can get a sense as to, uh, the neighbors', um, uh, concerns on Sunday especially, I think this, uh, can be resolved as that and I would, I would move to approve it.
Okay. Ms. Garza, will, any questions or anything?
I don't have any questions and I'll second his motion.
I just would like to see, I mean, what will be your hours of operation?
I'm sorry?
What will be your hours of operation?
Uh, just what the planning and zoning and TABC allows is what my hours of operation are. All music has to be done by nine, but we're on the inside. Last call gets done 11:30, uh, we're out of there by midnight. That's on the, you know, the sale of alcohol is TABC. And by, I think city zoning, Jaime sent me a letter. On Saturdays is 1:00 a.m.
Thank you.
But the music, as far as the live music, the music is shut down like earlier than that. Of course, if you're in the inside, you're going to have the jukebox on, but...
As your answer, as your question been asked.
Okay. I will recognize Mr. Gus Martinez's motion. Mr. Gus Martinez, will you make a clear motion, please, to the, the specific, uh...
I'll move to approve the ordinance as presented, um, with no condition other than the fact that I think, I think the owner and the neighbors can work out the Sunday noise with, with compassion and consideration. So I'll, my motion is to approve this resolution.
And I recognize Ms. Garza's second.
Yes.
We have a motion and second to approve as presented here in the other final discussions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
I will open public hearing B, conditional use permit. Mr. Osorio. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at The Cage. This is at 511 North Sherry Road, Suite B, being an 11.10 acre tract of land out of the northeast corner of Lot 194, John H. Sherry subdivision. The property is owned C4 and Juan Umberto Marquez doing business as Cosavan Sports LLC is the applicant. If the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance as well as wet zoning the property. On October 10, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located approximately a third of a mile south of Business Highway 83 along the west side of Sherry Road. The applicant is proposing an indoor and outdoor soccer facility with a restaurant lounge and would like to offer the sale and onsite consumption of alcohol. The types of events that will take place are recreational soccer leagues, recreational soccer tournaments, and eventually professional soccer tournaments. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Sundays from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. A total of 20 employees at different shifts will man the operation. Uh, currently, there are 84 parking spaces. There is a second phase that's being proposed, which will bump up the parking spaces to 260, uh, parking spaces, but that will be at a later time. Section 1.56 dash three of the zoning code states that bars must be 300 feet from nearest residence, school, or publicly owned property. There are some residences within 300 feet of the property. However, the building where the alcohol sales is going to happen is approximately 750 feet east of the Valley View Estates Residential Community. Uh, therefore, um, they still need the separation requirement, but I'm just letting you know that the alcohol sales will take place, uh, 750 feet east from the nearest residence. The applicant is proposing also to have onsite, uh, uniformed security in the larger events such as the tournaments. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of this conditional use permit. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years from the time that they get issued their TABC license. Waiver the 300-foot separation requirement from the residential area, compliance with building, fire, sign-in health codes, that the property be wet zoned, and that they provide uniformed security during tournaments, and that the sale of alcohol also be limited to the lounge area only. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
I would like to open the public hearing for adoption of ordinance 47-11 and 47-12. Does I open it for, in, in favor or against this request? Is there anybody from the audience that would like to, in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing for ordinance 47-11, 47-12 for a conditional use permit. I don't see anybody approaching the bench, so, um, this, uh, I will close the public hearing and open it for the council's directive.
Mayor, there's no other questions. I would like to move to approve.
We have a motion for 47, for 47-11 and 47-12 both?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just real quick, is this the old, um, case?
Can I, can I have a second? Can I have a second first?
Second.
We have a second, thank you. They're not going to open for discussion. Thank you.
All right. Is the old case building?
Yes, actually, the, uh, the soccer fields are going to be taking place on the back part of the property or the west side of the property. Uh, the front part of the property is going to be a granite store and, uh, he's also going to be selling some plumbing fixtures from that larger facility.
A what store?
Granite.
A granite store? Cause that, I've seen some granite slabs there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he started moving in some granite slabs, but we haven't been giving them, we still haven't given him the final on the building. He's still working on remodeling the building.
Cause the only thing that we have on hand right now is we're, it's just the conditional use permit for the...
For the sale of alcohol.
For the, okay. So, we'll be, be addressing the, like, paving of some of that parking area later?
Yeah, before the front building is occupied, uh, there's plans to redo the whole front parking area and re-stripe it and, um, those are all plans that are in the works, but the first phase of the development is the back area where the soccer fields are going to be taking place.
Okay. And where will, I'm sorry to be, where would those people park?
There's about 84 parking spaces in the back area.
In the back?
Yeah, there's a, in that back area and then also along the, the south side of the property.
Okay. All righty.
All right. Further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Uh, ordinance 47-11, 47-12 pass. This is a public hearing for, uh, agenda item number C, conditional use permit. Mr. Osorio.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Brisas del Mar restaurant. This is at 1505 North Conway Avenue, being the west 140 feet of Lots 7 and 8, Block 243, Mission Original Townsite. The property is owned C3 and the applicant is Steven Mendoza. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 10, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this CUP request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Conway and West 15th Street. Previously, a CUP for Mexican food restaurant had been issued in 2014 at this location. Now the new operator wishes the same consideration for a seafood restaurant. The hours of operation are Monday through Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. and Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. A total of 10 employees during different shifts will man the operation. All parking, landscaping, and sign codes are being met. There are residents within 300 feet, so waiver of the 300-foot separation requirement is required. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of this conditional use permit. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years from the issuance of their TABC license. We're also asking that they acquire a business license and we're also asking for the waiver of the 300-foot separation requirement to residences. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
This is a public hearing. I open it for anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use per, permit? I will close the public hearing and entertain the motion to adopt 40, uh, ordinance 47-12 unless there's a question by any of the council person.
47-13.
47-13, Mayor.
47-13.
I would like to recommend approval based on the recommendation of the staff.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve ordinance 47-13. And there's, uh, no other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries. Uh, ordinance 47-13 is approved. A public hearing for conditional use permit, uh, agenda item D.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages for Lada Cinquenta Dos Bar and Grill. This is at 4,001 South Sherry Road, Suite 100, being Lot 1 of Sherrilland Plantation Grove Tech Center, Number 2 subdivision. This is in the Sherrilland Plantation Planning Development and the applicant is Marco Mascorro. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 10, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is, is proposing a 5,600 square foot bar and grill located within existing commercial plaza at the southeast corner of San Mateo and Sherry Road. Again, this is in the Sherrilland Plantation Development area. In the past, this location has served, um, for a bar and grill for, for different establishments. The most recent one, which closed in 2016, was Evetta Bar and Grill. The hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. A total of nine employees will man the operation during any given shift. The proposed restaurant does include a bar component and section 1 dash 56 3A of the zoning code requires a minimum separation of 300 feet from the property line of any schools, churches, publicly owned properties, and residences. There is one residence that falls within the 300-foot radius, uh, however, in the past, the city council and the P&amp;Z have, uh, given the 300-foot, uh, separation waiver to the previous operators. There wasn't a public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years from the TABC, uh, issuance of their license. We're also requesting waiver of the, of the 300-foot separation requirement from the residential property and that they comply with all fire, health, building and, and building code requirements. We're also asking that they obtain a business license prior to opening the proposed restaurant, bar and grill. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1D is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the request for a conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? I am closing the public hearing, opening it for any discussions by the council.
Would like to move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, uh, ordinance 47-14.
Second.
And we have a second. And there's any final questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 47-14 is approved. Item E, conditional use permit. Mr. Osorio.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at 100% Antojitos Mexicanos. The address is 2306 East Expressway 83, Suites 1 and 2, being Lot 1, Simron Crossing Phase 1 subdivision. The property is owned C3, General Commercial, and the applicant is Antojitos Mexicanos. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 10, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit renewal. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of JR Drive and Expressway 83. The CUP was, was most recently approved on May the 8th of 2017 for a period of 15 months so that the CUP permit would be in line with their TABC license. The hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday from 10:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. and Friday through Saturday from 10:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Alcoholic beverages are only served during the allowable state selling hours. A total of 10 employees man this operation. Parking and landscaping are existing and meet code for this commercial plaza. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years from the issuance of their TABC license. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1E is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? I am closing the public hearing, opening it for discussion from any of the council. Any specific questions from the council?
I have no questions. I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and I have a second to approve, uh, ordinance 47-15. Any final discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance forty-seven fifteen approved. Item, agenda item F.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item one point one F is a public hearing for a conditional use permit renewal to keep an eleven by sixty-four portable building for a sales office use. This is for American Dream Vacations at fifteen nineteen East Expressway eighty-three, being lot four of Henry Science subdivision. The property is owned C four, and the applicant is Jose Acosta. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October ten, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit renewal. The subject site is located six hundred feet west of Stewart Road, along the north side of Expressway eighty-three, Frontage Road. This site is currently used as a sales office for the rental and sales of RVs. The applicant has been operating with the CUP at this location since September twelfth, or since September of two thousand and twelve. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday from eight AM to six PM, Saturday from nine AM to four PM, and they are closed on Sundays. A total of three employees man the operation. Parking and landscaping are existing and meet code. The RVs being displayed along the, the RVs are being displayed along the front of the property, and the building is actually set back a hundred and three feet from the front or the property line that it butts, the Frontage Road. Being that it is further back, staff doesn't object. There was no public opposition during the P and Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of this conditional use permit renewal. Staff is recommending approval for a period of three years. We're also asking that they continue to maintain the landscaping along the front area of the property. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item one point one F is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against the conditional use permit renewal? Anybody in favor against the conditional use permit renewal? I am closing the public hearing, and any questions by any of the council members, or I can entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve.
A motion, we have a motion on the floor to approve ordinance forty-seven sixteen.
Yes.
No second.
We have a second to approve ordinance forty-seven sixteen. Final discussion by the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item G.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item one point one G is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for home occupation. This is for a licensed home daycare at three eleven West Leonajo Apartments A and B. This is at the west half of lots one and two of block one oh two, original townsite of Mission. The property is owned R one, and the applicant is Norma de la Garza. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October ten, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Cummings and Leonajo Street, along the south side of Leonajo Street. The applicant owns a triplex on property that is owned R one. Currently, one of the units is rented out to a tenant, and the applicant will be living and running the daycare from the remaining two units. With regards to parking, this being a triplex has six parking spaces. The tenant that lives in one of the units will occupy two of the stalls, and four will be left over for the operation of the daycare, as well as the applicant. The days and hours of operation are Monday through Friday from five AM to six PM, and Saturday from seven AM to two PM. The applicant and one other employee will man the operation. Prior to the city giving them a business license, first, we need approval of this conditional use permit, but then they must also show to us that they've obtained DHS certification, and as well as how many children will be allowed, based on the size of the apartments one and two. They must also be compliant with section one point fifty-six dash one of zoning code, which regulates the signage that is allowed for home occupations. They must, or they must comply with the requirements, which limits them to a sign no bigger than one by one affixed to the building. They cannot have signs anywhere else, other than a one by one sign affixed to the building. There was no opposition during the P and Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of this conditional use permit for a period of one year to assess this new operation. Staff is recommending approval for one year as well, subject to the DHS certification, and complying with section one point five six dash one of the zoning ordinance. We're also asking that they obtain a business license. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item one point one G is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? Anybody in favor against the conditional use permit? I am closing the public hearing and opening for further questions from any of the council persons.
May I just have a question?
Go ahead.
She plans to have about twenty-five children in there. Is that going to be enough parking space?
It's not going to be twenty-five children. We did speak to the applicant, and at this time, it's based on the size of, of the apartment complex. We're thinking it's going to be more between eight to twelve, what DHS is going to allow.
Thank you.
Can you show the floor plan again, please? Is that, is that the two units that they're going to be using for the daycare, pretty much?
Pretty much, yes.
Yes.
It got cut off, but there's a bedroom where the applicant will be living towards the back end.
Is that on my left?
Yes.
The bedroom and, and the bathroom?
Yes, correct.
And then that, that area that's labeled as thirty-five by twelve, that big area, what, what is that?
That's pretty much where the daycare is going to be operating from. There's two sections, one for, or actually three, one for the smaller kids, one for the larger kids, and everything else, other than what you see on your far left of your monitor, is going to be for the daycare.
Okay, because I see the baby room, the toddler room, and...
Yeah, these two other areas are also going to be for the daycares.
Okay.
Is the applicant here?
I believe she is, somewhere in...
Is the applicant here? You want to come before the councilman for some questions?
Yes, my name is Norma de la Garza, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions?
Well, can you describe what those other areas are going to be? Because I'm, we see the, I see the, the ones that are labeled baby and toddler. So, the other rooms are going to be like a general?
This is, yeah, this is the baby room over here.
Yeah.
And then I have the bathrooms, where you can see the two bathrooms, and this is like for, I mean, because they want everything by age, so...
Right.
You know, we're dividing it, like into three sections.
Okay. And the larger area, is that going to be like a general playroom, or what's that? The thirty-five by twelve?
The one at the bottom.
The one at the bottom.
The bottom.
Are those chairs surrounding the sink, or what is it?
Yeah, no, the kitchen's over here. I mean, we still don't know, you know, by when we get, you know, who's the age is, then I will decide, you know, more kids on this side.
How do you use that bottom right? Like, what's it used for?
Right, right there, well, we put a sink, because that's what I'm going to need, and we want to do like, for them to sit and have a TV. Yeah.
But what have you been using it for? You, just your family, or like?
Currently, it's an apartment complex. She's transitioning it into this, but it's a TV.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I had tendance in it. It was a three bedroom, and we...
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe if, if you can explain the area where you're going to reside at, your bedroom, your kitchen, your living room, so we can be able to separate that. And so, I know you're still waiting for instructions, maybe from the proper agency, but can you describe where you're actually going to live, and we know that the rest will be used for...
It's going to be on that side over here.
On the left-hand side over here.
Are this a three-bedroom apartment?
It's going to be, I mean, I have my house. I'm going to be there during the week, taking care of it and everything. We're just going, it's going to be a one bedroom, and I'm going to have my bathroom on the other side.
Good.
Would, would this anybody, she has her house?
I'm sorry?
She said she has her house.
So, she's not...
Okay, so, we're under the understanding, when we reviewed this, that you are going to be living in one of the apartments?
Yes, I am.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, in that one bedroom, that's where you're going to be living in? Which kitchen are you going to use for, for your home?
Well, the same that I'm in.
Okay. And which is the restroom for your, not for the business, but for your home? The one in the left?
Yeah, there is another restroom, right, right?
Okay. So, we just wanted to clear that up, that since, since these type of permissions or permits we give, it's, it's through a home, home occupation, that means that the primary use is really your home, and that you're subsidizing your income by being able to, to do business out of the, out of your actual home?
Yes.
So, is that correct tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Because if you're not going to be living there, then it's a different type of business.
No, yeah, I am going to be staying there. I need to stay there.
If she, if she doesn't occupy the house, she can still do it, but she would require the approval of ninety percent of the residents within a certain radius. But that's a different type of...
That, that's why I just kind of feel like there's some hesitation when, so you're going to live there, right?
Yes. For the, I mean, for right now, yes. When I, you know, start business, yes, I will, I will be there.
Okay, the, the only thing is that I want to make sure that we're clear, is that one of the reasons why it's, we recommended approval is because the actual zoning is an R one, which is homes, and so it, it kind of conforms with that type of use to receive this conditional use permit. But I just want you to know and understand that at the moment you decide to go live somewhere else, then, then you can move forward with this type of business. This, this triplex cannot be two, you know, two apartments business, and one apartment being leased out to a tenant. We, we don't have that type of, of permits, and so I just want to make sure, Jaime, that, that she is clear, and that you all explained that very well.
Yeah, that's, that's probably the reason why we only gave her one year approval, to assess it and see if it's going to work, and then if it doesn't, then...
Right. This was, to be honest with you, this is very non-traditional, so we, we took, we really took some time, not only with staff, but also with our legal department, to make sure that this is something that, what type of recommendation we could, we could give. So, the, the important part here is that you recite there as your home, because it's what it is, a home occupation permit. If approved.
Martine, I just don't feel comfortable in going with one year, and make her make all of this investment or expense, and then it's, I mean, is it something that is going to stay there, I mean, for a while? Why do we just want to go with one year?
Because it's a new operation. Typically, a new operation, whether it's a drive-through or home occupation, the norm has always been just a one-year approval.
Would she explain the difference between living in there versus not? I mean, would, would you explain that, ma'am?
Can you repeat? I'm sorry?
Did they explain to you the difference about living in the, in the premises versus not?
Jaime explained everything to me, how it works, and how... I've, I've been talking to him like, for maybe like, what, maybe like two years or two years and a half, I've been coming in and getting, you know, it's not something that I thought of it overnight, getting my, the, the good tendance that I had in there. I mean, I am investing money in this, and I want it to work, and I am going to follow all the rules.
Okay.
I, I mean, I, I work retail, I want to get out of retail and do something new.
Any other questions? No other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve or disapprove, or...
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a second. Any final questions by any of the council persons?
Good luck.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance forty-seven seventeen is approved.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm calling for two point oh, consent agenda. Keep in mind that any of the council persons review the agenda items, please, and if there's anyone that you want to pull out, this is the time to identify it. Just give me the number, and we'll pull it out. If not, I will entertain a motion to do the consent agenda.
I just want to, I wanted to make a comment about two point three. I know that...
We're pulling out two point three. Any others? No others? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda, except for two point three.
I don't really have a question. I just wanted to see if we had...
All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item two point three. Garza?
I just wanted to see if we had someone in the audience that may want to speak to that. Not sure if we do.
Before we do that, can we have Ms. Carrillo present the actual item, so, so it can be heard by the public, and then...
And that's, and that's really my, my point, or my intent, is to, to get public information out.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Mayor Council. This would be a interlocal agreement between the City of Mission and the County of Hidalgo, and this is for the use of the event center. The County of Hidalgo desires to hold their fifteenth annual conference, and it's a pediognology and immunizations conference, and this is basically for the Zika personnel, including public health entities, medical providers, clinicians. And like I say, this is for their fifteenth annual. The conference is to be conducted on November the ninth of two thousand and eighteen. The county will be paying their firm fixed rate, that is, the event center will be charging, which is two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the conference, and the, the date is available, and so staff and city manager recommend approval to hold this conference.
Thank you.
Do you still need Mr. Olivares to...
Well, I think it would be nice to have him come up and, and do what he does best.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman, thank you for allowing us a few minutes. This is a tremendous honor for me, as you know, being part of Mission for all my life. That Mission has a beautiful venue, and as you know, the County has human services. We conduct trainings and in-services and workshops all over the county. This is the first time we're going to do something in Mission, and we're excited about it, and finally, we're looking for a venue that holds about, it's a small conference, about three hundred to four hundred people, and so we're looking forward to that, and this is a great opportunity to do business in Mission. I want to thank Mr. Garza, and Ms. Carrillo, and all the team here in Mission, to get this interlocal agreement, to get this going, and we're looking forward, if all goes well, to do more, more, more business with City Mission in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Olivares. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
Second.
Second to approve. All the final questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I carry.
Three point oh approval and authorizations. Three point one, Ms. Carrillo, reschedule of meetings.
Yes, Mayor Council. Office of the City Manager is requesting to reschedule the meeting for Monday, November twelfth, to Tuesday, November thirteenth, and this is due to City Hall being closed on Monday, the twelfth, for Veterans Day, so this item is now before you.
I move to approve, ma'am.
We, we have a motion and second, and this is open for further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Carrillo. You have three point two also.
Yes, Mayor Council. This is the authorization to award bid for the sign language interpreter for the city council meetings. Staff opened and received six bid responses. We are recommending awarding the bid to Gloria Ann Flores, interpreting services. She was the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications, at a cost of fifty dollars per hour per interpreter, but we do have Ms. Flores here, if the council has any questions for her, and staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I entertain a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
We have a motion and second to approve, and second, and this is a final discussion by the council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Three point three has already been done. Three point four, five, three point five, three point six. Ms. Longoria, award bids for the housing.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Item three point six is award bid for Housing Assistance Program, Phase seventeen three. We staff received two bid responses. We would like to award bid to G and G Contractors for two oh nine North Carolin, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications. all specifications. CAC recommended approval on October sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And this is open for discussion by the council. No discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Three point seven, Ms. Longoria?
Yes. Three point seven is authorization to rescind bid awarded to G and G Contractors and cancel contract for housing applicant at eight oh five North Canal Avenue for Housing Assistance Program, Phase seventeen-two. This is a request to rescind bid awarded to G and G Contractors on August twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. The contract signing for this award was on September the twelfth, two thousand eighteen. The applicant canceled after required three-day notice due to personal reasons. CAC recommended to rescind award and cancel contract on October the ninth. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
We have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Three point eight, Chief Dominguez, authorization.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item three point eight is authorization to accept the FY twenty eighteen Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant from the Office of Justice Department's Bureau of Justice Assistance. The total amount of the grant award is thirty-four thousand three fifty-seven. The grant will allow the City of Mission to operate and to purchase a total of forty-three bulletproof vests for our police officers. This is to replace any vest that is five years or older as required by the National Institute of Justice Standards. The Bureau of Justice Assistance requires a mandatory wear policy as required of the grant, and the City of Mission Police Department does have the aforementioned policy in effect. The City of Mission will provide a cash management of seventeen thousand one seventy-eight fifty that will be funded through the Police Department's federal drug forfeiture account. Staff and city manager request approval for this grant.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any discussion by any of the council persons? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point nine, Chief?
Item three point nine is authorization to accept the twenty nineteen Local Board Security Program Grant from the Office of the Governor's Homeland Security Grant Division for FY twenty nineteen. The total amount of the grant is two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. The grant will provide for overtime funds to increase patrol presence in and around the U.S.-Mexican border and throughout the City of Mission. The grant will be in effect from September the first, twenty eighteen, through August thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Staff and city manager request approval of this grant.
I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve, three point nine. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Three point ten, authorization, Mr. Benson?
Good evening. I have it for you. Item three point ten is authorization to modify existing air-conditioned filter services contract to add Mission Event Center. Staff is seeking authorization to add the Mission Event Center to the air-conditioning filter service monthly contract with Joe W. Fly, Inc., JF Filtration, via buy board contract number five-two-two-dish-one-seven, at a cost of forty-seven thousand forty, how many, forty-seven hundred dollars and four, four thousand seven hundred, forty dollars, thank you, four thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three eleven, ordinance forty-seven eighteen, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, on three eleven, I'm going to ask that the council takes no action on this agenda item. I did, we did receive a call from Mr. Rong Garza, the Director of the Lower Rio Grande Development Council, and there's still some work to be done. And so he's asked to see if we can just take no action and we'll bring it back.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Appreciate it. Three point twelve, financial statement, Ms. Bella?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item three point twelve is the approval of the August two thousand eighteen financial statements. The adjusted beginning fund balance was fourteen million eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand and eight dollars. Total revenue for the month was eighteen million three hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars, and total expenditures were eighteen million seven hundred and seventy-one thousand and sixty-eight dollars, leaving an adjusted ending fund balance of fourteen million four hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars, of which four point nine million was in general fund. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a second. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three fourteen?
Item three...
Three thirteen. Send corrected.
Yes. Item three thirteen is the approval of the attached budget amendments, which are in the Designated Purpose Fund, the M E D C Debt Service Fund, and the M E D C Capital Projects Fund. In the Designated Purpose Fund, we have thirty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars of revenues and expenditures to allocate funds for the purchase of forty-three bulletproof vests under the Bulletproof Vests Grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. And in the M E D C Debt Service Fund and Capital Projects Fund, we have revenues of eight point eight, eight million eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars, and expenditures of eight million six hundred and fourteen thousand five eighty-eight for the seven point nine million loan being obtained by M E D C from BBA Compass for the purchase of the seed building. It's a little bit more because we're including the debt service for the first year. The staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Three fourteen, Mr. Azarreal?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On three point fourteen, staff is seeking authorization to solicit bids for the GIS project and data maintenance. The project will entail the gathering and maintenance of GIS data, as well as the development and deployment of the citywide online GIS system. An estimated cost is a hundred thousand. Staff and city manager are recommending authorization to solicit for bids. Item three, three point fourteen is now before you.
I move to approve.
Do we have a motion to...
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the GIS project and data maintenance. Any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three fifteen, Mr. Pettis, authorization?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item three point fifteen is, the city council authorized staff to engage TETSI Infrastructure Group in negotiations according with the Texas Professional Service Procurement Act, E T C A Government Code, Section twenty-two five-four-point-zero-zero-one. The evaluation committee appointed to review and evaluate it on the basis of demonstrated competencies and qualifications to perform the services engaged TETSI in negotiations to fair and reasonable firm fixed fees and costs. Attached is the best and final negotiated detailed scope of work and cost proposal for TETSI Infrastructure Group in the amount of nine hundred and forty thousand nine thirty-four. Just for information, the original amount was one million four hundred and two thousand five hundred. Staff and city manager at this, at this time is recommending to seek direction from the council at this time.
Do I hear a motion?
Who is in the evaluation committee?
We had, it was myself, Mr. Robert Salinas, Public Works Director, and J. P. Terrazas, our city engineer.
Who's the engineer on this?
Excuse me?
Who's the engineer?
The, the firm is TETSI Infrastructure Group, yes.
And the funds for this comprehensive plan is coming from, from what, from what account, from what budget?
This is, it will come out of our drainage fund, because it's a drainage study plan.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the award, the contract for the comprehensive storm drainage assessment. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Open it for final discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Three point sixteen, approval of resolution, is it fifteen seventy-nine?
Yes, sir.
Fifteen seventy-nine.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item three point sixteen, authorizing the mayor to execute tabulation of values for right-of-way land acquisition for Taylor Road, Phase One, which is section from U.S. eighty-three to Business eighty-three, and providing an effective date. City of Mission executed an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the purpose of widening and improving Taylor Road. Acquisition of land is determined necessary for the completion of the Taylor Road, Phase One, project. The resolution authorizes the mayor to review, approve, and execute the tabulation of values for R O W dash A dash ten, as required by the AFA with text dot. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the resolution fifteen seventy-nine. Open it for discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And resolution fifteen seventy-nine passes. Three seventeen?
Thank you, Mayor. Item three point seventeen, approval of resolution number fifteen eighty of the City of Mission, authorizing the mayor to execute tabulation of values for right-of-way land acquisition for Taylor Road, Phase Two, which is a section from Business eighty-three to Mall Two, and providing an effective date. City of Mission executes an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the purpose of widening and improving Taylor Road. Acquisition of land is determined necessary for the, for the completion of the Taylor Road, Phase Two, project. The resolution authorizes the mayor to review, approve, and execute the tabulation of values for R O W dash A dash ten, as required by the AFA with text dot. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve, ma'am.
We have a motion and second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution fifteen eighty. Three eighteen, Mr. Pettis?
Yes. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and Council. Item three point eighteen is, staff is requesting approval to enter into a professional service agreement with Berta Perez Consulting. Consultant is to perform consultation services regarding training and post-training support in the implementation of the City of Mission Intervention System. The City of Mission Intervention System is designed to establish the foundation, system, actions, and processes to support continuous improvements for the City of Mission. The term of the agreement includes five training days and the amount of two thousand per training day. Staff and city manager recommend approval of the professional service agreement with Berta Perez.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
A second. I have a question.
You have a second, and go ahead and ask the question.
Have we ever used this consulting services before?
No, ma'am. Not. This will be the first.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Three nineteen has already been approved. Three twenty, Mr. Garza?
Mayor, City Council, item three point twenty is an interlocal cooperation agreement, interlocal agreement between, or for the purposes of mending the percentage allocations of the parties' allotment of the proposed Madero Bridge Board and establishing rights and responsibilities of the parties to be included in the Madero Bridge Agreement. So the Mayor of McAllen, Hidalgo, and Mission will be full-voting members of the Madero Bridge Board. The remaining two members will be appointed by the City of Mission. And these are points that are discussed in this interlocal agreement. The City of Mission will manage the expenditures during the construction of the bridge. Upon completion of the bridge, the Madero Bridge Board of Trustees will assume the fiduciary role to manage all revenues and expenses, including the payment of the City of Mission debt service incurred for the construction of the bridge. Now, we've set up a division of percentages based on the three cities participating. The City of Mission participating with thirty-eight percent, City of McAllen thirty-three percent, and the City of Hidalgo thirty percent. Just to make myself clear, that is the percentage of, of the revenue being distributed once the bridge would become a profitable international bridge.
Mission is thirty-seven percent, right?
Thirty-seven, the City of Mission, City of McAllen thirty-three, and the City of Hidalgo thirty percent. This, this is also still pending approval from, I believe, the City of McAllen, and their interlocal agreement through their council, and also the Anselde West Board Bridge at this moment.
Yes. Hidalgo has already approved.
But they have?
Yeah, they already have. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. And this is open for any questions. Any questions by the council? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm calling for four point oh, unfinished business, four point one, condition...
Before we go to four point oh, if we could, my understanding, I'm going to go to item three point one-three. That item, my understanding was that, that it was coming to the council prior to the approval by the M E D C. And so it would have been proper for our motion to have been subject to the approval of the, of the M E D C.
You're talking about the, the budget amendments? Three point one-three?
Three point one-three.
It's a budget amendment, yes.
Yes, I believe that's correct. Is that...
But we, we did approve them before.
Yes, we did approve them, but it needed to be subject to, I guess, Ms. Flores can explain.
Yes, Mayor. So what Ms. Garza is talking about is there was a budget amendment. And so the City of Mission makes that budget amendment once E D C receives the funds. Because it was an action taken tonight, approving E D C to go out for the loan and close on the loan, Mission went ahead and took the action to do the budget amendment. However, we're not going to be doing, the City of Mission will not be doing the budget amendment if the E D C Board does not approve the loan tomorrow night. So any motion made, it would be subject to the approval of the Board tomorrow night. That's correct.
Yeah. Mr. Meade, I think the instruction is to direct you to, to follow the protocol that's been established since we, for tomorrow's meeting.
Yes, yes, Mayor.
If it doesn't pass, then...
It is a time-sensitive deal. Our rates, the, the deal that we got, the interest rate, expired tomorrow. So if we didn't take action today, then we'd lose the rate and we'd have to start all over again. So that's the reason why we asked for, for the council to take contingent on no changes being made tomorrow.
But it's, has not, hasn't that been approved by the Board and then M E D C?
So the Board had approved it, but then the bank's attorney asked us to do a public hearing process. And so that, you know, that made us go through the six-day public hearing. The public hearing ends tomorrow, but so does the rates that we got. So we asked to, you know, to not lose that, that twenty-year fixed rate, we asked the council if we could take action proactively.
Mr. Flores, is that okay?
That is permissible, Mayor, yes.
Okay. Contingent to, I just want to direct you to make sure that we follow the protocol.
No, no, thank you, yes.
So do, is that, is that good enough?
That's sufficient.
Do we have to rescind the previous motion and then make an amendment to that, or...
I don't believe it's necessary, Ms. Garza, only because the direction has already been given to both the E D C and to our staff. So if, if it's not approved at the Board, staff knows not to take the action. We'll bring it back for any rescission or correction action.
Correct. The Board, the Board will be taking action on the exact same thing that you all took. If that changes, then that change, that voids the action you took.
Okay. Alrighty.
And I'm making plans to be there tomorrow with the Board, too. So I'll, I'll rest assured that I'll...
Yeah, considering the time, I hope nothing changes. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for, for that clarification for the public, Mr. Flores. Thank you. Back to four point oh, four point one, are we going to leave the table there, or I'm asking a direction from staff?
On this item, Mayor and Council, we'd like this item removed from the table. And if, if the council does remove this item from the table, we also ask that they open the public hearing section of the, of the meeting once again.
Okay.
So moved.
We have a motion to remove the, the four point one out of the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And at this time, I'll open four point one, call for agenda item four point one, as a public hearing, condition use permit, Mr. Azarreal?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On item four point one, it's a public hearing for a condition use permit for the installation of a hundred-foot monopole wireless communications facility with associated group equipment for T-Mobile. This is at a three point twenty-nine acre tract of land, more or less, of an unplanted commercial reserve of Simran Country Club, Phase One, Section One subdivision. The property is owned C Three and APC Towers LLC is the applicant in care of T-Mobile. And if the council is inclined to approve this condition use permit, it would require adoption of an ordinance. On September twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this condition use permit request. The subject is located at the southwest corner of JR Drive and U.S. Expressway eighty-three frontage, just south of Tremes subdivision. This area here shows you the location where T-Mobile is proposing to install their telecommunications towers. I've been working with T-Mobile since the last city council meeting to come up with the location that would best fit their needs, as well as this, those of the citizens of Mission. At our P and Z meeting, some of the concerns that were addressed by two property owners that live in the Simran area...
that live in the Simran area was that they didn't like the proximity of where the tower was initially proposed, being at the southeast corner of the property. And in talking to the applicant, the only area that they can realistically put it based on what the owners allowed them is near the northeast corner. Now, I did have a chance to meet with the applicants just prior to the meeting, and they did tell me that the proposed site will now be sixty feet from the northeast corner, or sixty feet in from the property line. Given that there is approximately ten feet of right-of-way, the location will be about seventy feet from the street. So, it's further in than what's actually circled there in yellow.
Do you designate the muscle menos where it's going to be, so for the purpose of...
Kind of like where the green area is at, Mayor. And it's about the width of a large residential lot, about seventy feet. And I know that in the previous meetings, we had discussed the possibility of moving it to the northwest corner, however, the owner of the property does not want to commit so large of a piece of his land as an easement. He's got other plans for that property, and the most that T-Mobile was able to work out was approximately seventy feet from the street. The P and Z did recommend approval, subject to staff working with T-Mobile and coming up with the location for the site. Obviously, we would like it further in if possible, but being that that's not possible at this time, based on the conversations with the applicant, as far as the owner allowing them the use of additional land, I don't think that's a possibility at this time. We do have some exhibits that show you the coverage areas for the proposed tower. This is a point-seven mile radius. At the last meeting, they discussed exactly how much of a radius would be improved as far as using your cell phones indoors. If you look at the one point seven miles, it does encompass the Mission Event Center as well as the Walmart, the H E Bs, all the major commercial establishments along the expressway. There's also another exhibit that shows you the, this is the R F map without the proposed tower. This is, the areas that you see within the circles are not red, and most of the areas that are red are further west, so this means that there's a gap in coverage for T-Mobile. The future, or the proposed coverage at the northeast corner would fill in those gaps. It does encompass, like I said, the Mission Event Center, Home Depot, H E B Plus, the Walmart, and we did work with them. The most that they're willing to give up is seventy feet from the street. That's the proposal here in front of you today. I do have the representatives for T-Mobile that are here to answer any questions.
I would like to open the public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request for a conditional use permit?
Hi, Mayor, Council, Charlie Mitchell, Houston, and I represent APC slash T-Mobile on this. I won't take up a whole lot of your time, I just want to say that we have worked with Mr. Acevedo, and we've done everything we can to accommodate the city's needs. One thing I want to talk about, Metro P C S also uses T-Mobile Network, and if you were to look at Mission, there's over almost fifty thousand customers between T-Mobile and Metro P C S that use the system, that this would affect, and when we went back and did the R F propagation, it does cover the event center, and our biggest issue of moving it is the landowner. This site would probably, will not happen if we have to move it, because the landowner will not give us any more space. So, if there's any questions, I'll be here to answer your guys' questions. Thank you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing for a conditional use permit, anybody in favor or against this This is a public hearing for a conditional use permit. I am closing the public hearing. Mr. Plata, you have that.
Yeah, so what is the final location that you are proposing?
It would be here where, on the, I guess, right side of your monitor, where it says N E, or northeast.
Or the northeast.
Location.
But it won't be adjacent to the street?
No, it'll be about...
About seventy foot...
About seventy feet from the street.
In...
Can you go back to the photo of the finished tower?
The finished out?
Yeah, just so the public can see it.
Go back one more. No, the first one, I guess it's towards, you want to see the actual antenna?
Yeah, like, there you go.
It's not going to look quite bad, and that's a hundred and fifty.
This is an example, it's a...
What's it going to...
The antennas will be a little lower, there won't be a circle, it'll be basically one on each side, kind of almost square.
Okay.
The one that we showed as an example was the most recent one that was built by T-Mobile.
And our, on our south, South neighbor.
And that one is a hundred and fifty feet in height. The one that they're proposing is only one hundred feet.
One hundred feet.
Correct.
Any other questions?
Just make sure you fence it.
No questions?
I do have a quick question.
Go ahead, ma'am.
On the fencing, I know that you mentioned the last time that they were going to use those green slats.
No, it's going to be like a mesh screen that goes around the perimeter of the chain link fence.
Actually, it is the green slats. It covers, it has a little bit higher shield rating as far as like, covers like more than ninety percent of the see-through capacity of it, and it's more of a long-term solution. So, it will be the actual green slat and fence, a little bit nicer than the construction type that comes around.
Okay.
Any other?
That's all.
Make it look nice.
Do I hear a motion?
Make it look nice.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to approve.
I'll move to approve. We have a motion and second, and this is, no other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, the conditional use permit is approved.
Good luck, guys.
Five point oh, five point one, city managers comment, Mr. Garza.
Mayor, just what we did today with Mission High School, we're proposing the same with the other school districts as well, with Sherland and Ahoya School Districts that are part of our Mission City Limits. However, we did respond to Mustangville, which is a small city within Mims, that went ahead and saw in elected officials, police chief, city manager, staff, and it was a real nice experience, and we are going to go ahead and invite them to be kind of like in participation with like what we do for the school district when we have different directors go and be part of principal for a day. We're going to ask those kids to come and be able to spend some time with the elected officials and yourself, so that we can give them that same type of experience that's been requested by the school district, and we'd be more than honored to do that.
I was actually hoping to have the, like, I know it would be difficult to have one school at a time because there's so many elementaries, but if we could have maybe, you know, four or five or six of them at the same time.
Come together.
Yeah, come together at the same time.
We were talking about to find out to see how many have had an election.
Well, you know, to start off with them first, you know, start off with them first, those that have an election, one at a time.
Right.
You know, so they can bring the whole team, and I told Mr. Garza that I would like for it to be about two hours, you know, so they'll get an idea, and I would like to have it between one-thirty to three-thirty.
The shadowing.
You know, so we won't interfere with their morning, average daily attendance and all that, you know, as far, and in the afternoon after lunch, they can come over, and then don't miss the bus going back either.
Okay.
You know, because the parents, I think the parents in the buses, they go at three forty-five. So, we're going to try to schedule it like that, not, you know, not a full day.
During their, during their class.
Not a full day.
Okay.
You know.
Well, I just want to be sure to recognize all the kids that are involved.
Yes, and obviously, we would want to open the door for as many as we can.
Right.
You know, as we can.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Five point two, Mayor, I just want to let you know that, first of all, I would like to see how many would be challenged to be there Saturday at noon at the Parkson Recreation to be able to try, I was challenged to try the blindfold, the blindfold and the white cane to experience that. I think I'm going to take the challenge. I do want to let you all know, let the community know, that my grandma was blind for fifty years, and when I was growing up, I was used as the white cane on her behalf when she came to travel from Monterey to her house. I was a white cane for her, and if I would have known when I was eight, nine years old what a white cane could do, you know, if I would have had that training and so forth, I can tell you my grandma would have had a better life than what she did. But she was, it's very astonishing, and the young fellow that was here blew me away when he said that his other senses are keener. I can tell you, you know, we all are kids, right? We would try to trick our grandma with a Mexican peso and American dollar, and it never worked. It never worked, and we couldn't figure it out, all my brothers and us, we couldn't figure out how come she could tell just by touching it and feeling it and, you know, and so forth. And it goes back to the fire department training, you know, the fire department training when we do the self-contained breathing apparatus and we cover the mask, you know? As soon as you do that, those that have gone through any kind of training with self-contained breathing apparatus will know, and will know that your senses, the other senses, kick in, kick in, and that's, those are experiences that I just wanted to share with the community and share with you all, that's part of my mayor's comment. Five point three, Mr. Goss Martinez, you'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, this is a new fiscal year, so I think it's time that we go back to the table and prioritize our negotiations with civil service, with fire, with police, make sure to get the, not just, well, not just their raises, but also equipment and stuff of that nature. The sooner the better, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, sir, we're in the process, I think the next collaboration meeting is...
I'm sorry, Mayor, I don't have the date for you right now, do we have that? It's tomorrow?
Tomorrow, sir, at four-thirty.
At four-thirty, right, that's what I was going to say, tomorrow, four-thirty.
And I know Mr. Martinez is part of the committee.
Mr. Martinez is part of this, you know, yes.
Here?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Here. Tomorrow, four-thirty, but it's a collaboration with the fire department. Are we waiting for the police department to give us, is the ninety days over, or?
We're still waiting, Mayor.
But are the ninety-day period over?
No, it's not yet.
We're still in the window.
Yes.
But we haven't received any notification, any...
The ninety days is not over, Mayor, but I understand why, on that side, they haven't signed the waiver, just so they can come to the table quicker.
Yeah.
It's...
Yeah, I understand that, you know...
There's a couple of individuals that, well, anyway.
No, yes, thank you, Mr. Martinez. We'll wait, we'll wait the ninety days, you know, try to get it sooner so we could get going cheap, but it is what it is, we're patient. The key word between the collaboration model is collaboration, you know. Next, Ms. Garza.
I don't have any additional comments, thank you.
Well, I do have a question tomorrow, there is some meeting for...
Yes, for the collaboration with the fire department, the only problem is, I hate to tell you that it is best if you don't attend, because the reason is, Mr. Martinez and I are on the collaboration model.
It's like a committee meeting.
If you get another council person in, it would be, it would be a quorum, and we haven't posted, so, but we will fill you in.
Well, I was going to request that we have a budget workshop as soon as possible, and maybe needs to happen before we make any promises or commitments.
Well, yeah. The, no, I'm talking about the collaboration.
No, we're going to find out tomorrow, whatever, but, I mean, I was with Mr. Plata that, at some point, this should lead to a workshop to where we can finalize.
Yeah, I think that's urgent that we need, I would like to see how we end up in fiscal years of September.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of budget amendments that have taken place, I mean, I would like to list all of our bond issues that we have crammed, and, you know, to see where we stand.
How long does, will it take you, Ms. Bela, to, for the preliminary ending of the budget? Thirty days, sixty days, or?
Yeah, we usually go for that in February, in the final of the September period, and trying to get the number by the end of the year.
Yeah, that'll be great.
But I move on.
That's by December, December?
Yeah, December, December the thirteenth, when we, when we meet, on December the thirteenth.
But you should have all your numbers pretty much by September, no?
No, we don't close the year till November, because we still do have adjustments off the year.
Yeah, they have to close the purchase orders and all that, you know, everything else, get all the invoices and all the checks, and the checks have to pass the bank also and so forth, for them to give us a preliminary budget. If not, it's still encumbered, in the concept of encumbrance, as far as that is concerned. But yes, I will, I will work on a quick schedule for you, and hopefully, I'll present it to the council. And, well, there's no, and this, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to V T C A Government Code, Section five-five-one point zero-zero-one. Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to.
We have a motion, do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
One, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We are going to...
I said aye.
Go into executive session, and we'll be back as soon as we finish. Okay, I would like to entertain my motion to reconvene.
I'm going to.
We have a motion to reconvene, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. I would like to call six point oh, executive session, item six point one, to be exact, consultation with attorney, Section five-five-point-zero, five-five-one point zero-seven-one. Mr. Flores.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item six point one, a discussion and possible settlement of claims at seven sixteen, seven eighteen, seven twenty, and seven twenty-two Windsor Glen Drive regarding utility repairs. If the council wishes to take action, we would need a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and settle the claim of property owner at seven twenty-two Windsor Glen Drive by retaining a third-party contractor to repair driveway damages resulting from a utility break, and further authorizing city manager to settle any future claims from the property owners of seven sixteen, seven eighteen, and seven twenty Windsor Glen in the same manner.
Do I hear a motion to accept what we discussed in executive session? First and second, and this, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, city manager instructed to follow the six point one. Six point two, personnel matters, so Mr. Flores, will you prompt us?
Yes, Mayor, on six point two, a deliberation and possible action regarding employment agreement with Associate Municipal Court Judge Mauro Reyna. If the council wishes to take action, we would need a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into an employment agreement with Municipal Court Judge Mauro Reyna pursuant to the parameters discussed in executive session and for a term of two years.
Do I hear the motion?
Approve.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Six point three A.
Two years or one plus one?
Six point three.
She's trying.
Six point three?
Six point three A.
Six point three A, Mayor, is deliberation regarding U S Customs and Border Protection, notice of condemnation for City of Mission, two point six-four acres of land, more or less, along Levy Road. If the council wishes to take action on this item, we would need a motion to authorize the mayor or city manager to execute documents, authorizing the U S Customs and Border Protection right of entry, and further authorize the city attorney to represent the city in any action relating to access of the referenced property.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second question, Mr. Martinez?
No.
Comments?
Comments, you know, the wall is a very divisive issue, Mayor, so we'll leave it at that, but this has to be done, and it's a condemnation, so we'll uphold the law.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?